Okay.
All right. Are you ready to do roll call now?
I am, and just right off the bat, I want to apologize to anyone if it gets a little bumpy. I'm going to try to run the Zoom meeting and operate in the administrator role and operate in the clerk role all at the same time. So it could get a little dicey, but I'll do my best.
Well, and if you need us to slow down, just say so, Corinne, and we'll take a pause.
Thank you. So I am ready when you're ready.
All right. Well, again, call the meeting to order. Can we have a roll call, please?
Trustee Bear.
He said here, but his mic is off.
Here.
Trustee Beddinger.
Here.
Trustee Johnson.
Here.
Trustee Knutson.
Here.
Trustee Mack.
Here.
Trustee Patterson.
Here.
Okay, we can continue with our work session. Elise, would you like to kick things off for us?
Yes, I'd be happy to. Thank you so much for making some time for us this evening. I've got, so Kami is on from the Town of Cedar Edge and Larry from the Town of Hotchkiss. I asked them to join us so that you can ask questions of some of the other communities and their thoughts on One Delta County, which is what we're here to talk about tonight. And also, they've been participating on the transition team that has helped develop everything that's in front of you this evening. So we came to you last fall during the budget season to talk with you about One Delta County and our plans for One Delta County. So I assume most everybody's familiar, but in case anybody's not, I'm going to take a couple steps backwards and just describe why we're talking about this, what it is, and how we got here really quick. So just about exactly a year ago, DSET, our current Economic Development Corporation, our 501(c) that does economic development for the county, really communicated to its membership and to the community at large that it was really struggling financially. And that's for a lot of reasons, and can certainly elaborate on any of those if anybody's got questions. But in that conversation, then a task force was formed to really evaluate what we needed to do. What do we need to do so we continue to have economic development? How do we solve some of the challenges that DSET is facing? In August of last year, we convened a stakeholder group. Everybody was there. We had over 50 people from around the county, from each of the municipalities, from a lot of our nonprofits, from all of our economic-related entities. And we sat down to really talk about what the future of economic development in Delta County should look like, who should be involved, and where are the gaps in economic development that we need to address. And out of that conversation, we took that original task force that had been formed, and we expanded it to add a broader mix of representation from across the county. And that group was tasked with coming up with a new strategy and a new plan for economic development in the county. So with that, that group came up with the concept of One Delta County. And what One Delta County is designed to do is really replace DSET, take over the economic development coordination and function. And the way that we described it last fall, and I think you'll see in the plans that you have in front of you, is that we really wanted to sharpen the point. Take economic development as a broad concept and really sharpen the point and get extremely focused on what we are doing. We have a lot of entities across the county that economic development, components of economic development are what they do. And the areas that we don't have specific focus are on business retention and business expansion and business recruitment. And so the intent that this group put together was really designed around trying to, again, sharpen that arrow and get us focused in on first and foremost, supporting the existing businesses that we have and helping them find ways to be as successful as they can be and hopefully grow and expand. We know that most of our jobs that we have in our county come from our existing small business owners, and we want to support them and help them be as successful as they can be and put a stronger emphasis on their needs and helping them to succeed. The second thing that that transition or the task force that worked last fall did was really evaluate why we have struggled over the last decade to keep our economic development ship financially afloat, because it has been an ongoing battle. And we decided at that time to come to each of the local governments with a proposal that the local governments really take over the financial burden of staffing and organization for the short term so that we can really focus on the work of economic development. So really as a stabilizer, can the local governments come in and financially stabilize our economic development efforts by providing funding for staffing so that that staff can then really do the work of economic development and remain focused on economic development rather than fundraising their salary, which has been seen as part of the problem. And then the third piece of that was looking at how do we attract and retain quality staff? We've experienced high turnover, and a big part of that is the lack of benefits and the lack of a decent salary. So somebody comes on, they start doing good work, and then they go to the next good thing. We really need some consistency and solid staff support for us to be able to continue to move things forward. So part of the plan was that the county would then become the employer of that staff person so that we can provide both a salary, which we're asking all of the local governments to help support financially, but also be able to provide good benefit package so that it becomes an attractive position that we can really hopefully attract the right person into that job and retain them for the long run. So in our proposal to each of the local governments last fall, we came up with a funding model that takes the cost of staff and benefits for this economic development position that we've been calling it the project manager and divides that cost up amongst all of the local governments using the same formula that is used to distribute the countywide sales tax, the shared sales tax. It's essentially a population-based formula. In your packet, you've got a copy of the IGA that shows you how those percentages break out. But we recognize that, you know, for some of our local governments, that's a big change in what they have contributed in the past. And so we wanted to give everybody a time to sort of build that into their budgets over the long term. And so in year one, which would be this year, Delta County and the City of Delta agreed to kind of pick up a slightly larger share of the overall pie. And over the course of the three years that we're asking each local government to commit to this, each of the other municipalities would take on a slightly larger share so that by year three, we really have that balance of commitment out between all of the local governments. I want to emphasize that we did not say at the end of the three years that this would end. We really see this as a three-year process to determine whether or not this new model that we are proposing can be successful and to determine whether or not we've got the right work plans. It's really about, again, using that word stabilization, we believe it's going to take at least three years to stabilize and begin to impact the economy based on this work. And so this first commitment is really about trying to get us off on the right foot and in the right direction. Following coming to each of the local governments last fall, and everybody committed to that concept, and you guys were asked at a really difficult time, and so you did not make the firm commitment, but did and have engaged in the ongoing conversation. And we really appreciate Corinne's participation and support in the conversations. It's been very helpful. And we're hoping that you'll think it through and see what we've put together and see some value and agree to join this partnership. We truly believe that for economic development to work in the county, it has to be countywide-focused. It has to be driven by a broad support group. It has to have participation from each community in the county and from each business sector in the county and from businesses across the county. And I think that's really the big shift in focus here. We are going from a small group of people tasked with economic development and really trying to create an open, broader representative group of people that are working together in partnership and making it more inclusive of each of our communities and our business industries so that we have just a broader emphasis and focus. It's really the single biggest change in what we are doing. After we came to each of the municipalities in the fall and worked to see if we had the commitment to be able to bring some of that financial stabilization, the next thing that we did was form a transition team. That transition team includes representation from each of our communities. It includes representation from some of the chambers and then business representation as well. We've got several business owners that have been volunteering their time. And the transition team has really done the hard work. When we came to all of the communities last fall, the question was asked of, well, how is this going to look? And we were very purposeful to say, we're not sure yet. That's, we don't feel like us, the smaller group, is the right group to make all the decisions. We want that broader representation. So the transition team has been a mirror of the proposed Board of Directors, and that group has then worked through committees to really generate all the information that's in front of you today. So we have drafted a work plan that really takes us through the first 12 months and is designed around standing up our initial programming. We have put together articles of incorporation and bylaws for the 501(c)(3) nonprofit. Our intent is to take over the nonprofit entity that is DSET. We had a lot of discussion about whether or not to create a new entity or to utilize that infrastructure, if you want to think of it, of infrastructure. And the decision was made just recently, let's to go ahead and absorb or assume the 501(c)(3) of DSET, but DSET will go away and will be replaced with a whole new Board of Directors and a whole new group of folks that are managing that work. The focus and the bylaws, the articles, everything will change to reflect this conversation that we have all been having. And then we've also put together intergovernmental agreements and MOUs that would be executed between all of the parties. And I would say that is the single other biggest shift in what we're doing. The intent is to get very intentional and to utilize formality, like agreements, to guide what we're doing rather than having looser structures that lead to making it difficult to work together. So those are some of the big changes that we are proposing through this work. So all of our participation will be guided by an IGA. It lines out everybody's roles and responsibilities and who is responsible for what. And you have a copy of that in front of you today. So with that, I think that's a pretty good overview and highlight. Hopefully, it's clear what we're in front of you for this evening. Obviously, we're not asking you to adopt and approve this tonight. We wanted to present this to you, get your questions answered, and then based on that conversation, see where it goes. And hopefully, we can come back to you here in the next few weeks for more formal review and discussion. But tonight's really about making sure you've got all the information and that whatever questions you have about the process, it's not everybody that's currently on council was on council last fall. We've got to make sure everybody is up to speed and understands and see what questions about there. So I don't know if Kami or Larry would like to add anything, but I'd like to give them a chance to. And then we're really after this here just to answer your questions.
This is Larry. I would like to address the council from a municipal perspective, if I could. I'm Larry Welkinning, the mayor of Hotchkiss. I was elected two years ago, and the overwhelming question that I was asked while campaigning was, what are you going to do about economic development? I said, I don't know, but I'll find out. So once I got elected, we started a number of different projects. One, the Hotchkiss Prosperity Plan. That took almost a year to do. Then we went into a downtown streets workshop. We are currently in a feasibility study for light industry and makerspace in the downtown core. And then we had our first meeting with the university technical assistance people to try to get a vision for what the downtown Hotchkiss business or the core area of downtown could look like. We have gathered a ton of data, a ton. But the question comes up, what do we do with that? We have, we're a smaller town than Payonia. We have 10 employees. We don't have the capacity to move forward and try to recruit businesses or even the capacity to try to retain our businesses. When I started with the transition team for One Delta County, it all made sense to me. And I drank the Kool-Aid, and I think it is a wonderful plan. I think it's well organized, there's good people involved, and I think it can be successful. When I went to the council during our budget season last year and asked for their approval to put this in the budget, there was some discussion, and some people said, well, we don't, I think we can do it on our own. And I said, no, we can't. We just cannot do this on our own. So with that in mind, every municipality in the county, like Elise mentioned, gets a piece of the Delta County sales tax. For the Town of Hotchkiss, that amounted to last year $72,000. It's quite a chunk. Our cost to be in One Delta County for the first year is $680, $681, something like that. I think that following this plan, that the efforts of One Delta County can increase what we receive from Delta County in sales tax revenue alone, much less what may happen within our own municipality on economic development based on One Delta County's efforts. As Greg Brink from Cedar Edge mentioned one time at one of our meetings, he said, you know, a rising tide raises all boats. And he's correct. So the question was, but well, what if we don't get anything in Hotchkiss? Or Cedar Edge doesn't get anything, or Payonia doesn't get anything? Maybe it just is going to be growth within the county or within the city of Delta. And looking at the rising tide, we're still going to get a piece of that. And I think year over year, we're going to get much more in revenue than what it's going to cost us for these first three years of joining One Delta County. And the other thing that I really, I think is important is that every municipality that participates will have a seat on the board. We will actually have a say in what happens in and around our communities. And I think that's very important. With the other economic development, we really didn't have a say in what was going on. And this allows us to give our input to make decisions with. So again, I think this is just a dynamite way to approach it on a countywide basis. I think our cost is very reasonable, and I think that we will see increases in our revenue because of it. That's all I've got to say unless somebody has some questions. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Larry and Elise. Does Kami want to say anything before we open to questions?
Hi, this is Kami. I also have Amy Crick here with me. We're neighbors, so we can kind of get around the social distancing. Amy sat on the Delta County Economic Development Board, and she's also been on that transition team. So we've been listening in. The only thing I would like to add to what Larry said is that in Cedar Edge, we recognize that we don't have the capability of doing it all on our own. We recognize that we are stronger together. I think especially in light of coronavirus, I think it's really important that Delta County really truly band together. I think it's really important that we move together on the same foot, move forward. I think now more than ever, it's very important that we band together to help our entire business community and the entire county. And we're just, I would just reiterate with what Larry said, is that we are much stronger together, and it doesn't matter if it happens in my town or in your town, we all benefit at the end of the day. So we just appreciate Corinne's involvement leading up to this, and we just hope that the Town of Payonia can join with us because I think there's very exciting things happening. I agree with Larry that this is a really good plan, and we are just excited to get it implemented.
Okay, thank you very much. We have a chat from Chris Kaski, who wants to give us a business perspective. If you can make it really quick, Chris, we only have a few minutes left, and I would like the board members to ask questions. So go ahead.
Absolutely. Yeah, this is Chris Kaski. I've been participating on the One Delta County transition team, and I'm a local Payonia resident. And I had to locate my business in Montrose because we couldn't find space in the North Fork. So hopefully, a functioning One Delta County would resolve that sort of issue. That's all. Happy to take questions.
Okay, thank you, Chris. All right, members of the board, anybody want to ask a question? Karen? Unmute, Karen.
There, let me unmute. There we go. I have several questions. I noticed in your articles, you've removed the provision, the prohibition against influencing legislation or backing some political candidate. I noticed that is still in your bylaws, though. Bylaws can be changed. I'm just concerned that it won't get to be a political thing. It might be to somebody's advantage to back some legislation that would bring economic development into the county, but I was just concerned about that. And I didn't know if that was intentional or not.
Yeah, Karen, that is a little intentional. So DSET started out as the 501(c)(6) entity. 501(c)(6) entities have broad ability to be involved politically. They shifted and became a 501(c)(3), but that language never got taken out. And so we're actually taking that out so that we are more in compliance with the 501(c)(3) requirements. And we agree that being locally political is not the intent of this entity, but there may be issues that come up at a state or national level that we do want to be able to get involved with. So we'll have to figure out how, as a 501(c)(3), this entity can do that. And as a result of that, there actually is conversation about adding to the work plan, exploring whether or not a 501(c)(6) actually makes more sense or not. But there's a lot of concern about that very same issue. And the intent is to function as a 501(c)(3) that is really limited in its ability to get political. 501(c)(3)'s can get involved in political issues, but really more from an educational standpoint as opposed to being truly political. So that, we've had a lot of conversation around that, actually.
Okay, good. I notice if your membership, chambers can be members as well as the town, provided they come up with a minimum cash. What is the minimum cash?
You know, we don't have that established yet. We're working on policies and procedures right now. The original budget had it at $250. That came out of the transition team or out of the task force as a proposal, but the transition team is still working on that detail. That was one of the key changes, is making sure that we have broad representation from across the county and that our partners are really all at the table together. And that means making sure chambers have the opportunity to be at the table. So there is a guaranteed seat at the Board of Directors table for each chamber in the county moving forward.
Okay, and the business members, I notice, I know they are, and for their board, there's a nominating committee composed of business members, and they pick whoever the other businesses are. My concern is that the North Fork could be just left out. There's nothing, you know, the rest of it is every town is involved. But this one, it could just be a bunch of Delta businesses, and that's it. And that bothers me.
That's, I have to say, every single community has expressed that exact same concern. I think everybody's concerned that it will just be from one community. So what we have talked about on the transition team, and I would welcome Chris or Amy or Kami or anybody else to add to this, is that the success at the end of the day for this entity to achieve the things we're trying to achieve is really, especially on the business side of this, is going to be really incumbent upon everybody who believes this is important, reaching out to our broad business community and garnering interest, because we can only have businesses representing each community if businesses step up to participate. And thankfully, we have so far. I think we, our business participation is representative of the county at this point in time. And so I think we can achieve that. But that's really going to be incumbent upon all of us, and I would extend that to you guys, too, helping to reach out to the business community and saying, would you please consider doing this? Consider signing up to be a Board of Director, but also consider signing up to be a member of this organization, because it's only going to be as strong as that membership base that we're able to pull together.
Okay, and my last question is, you're asking for a three-year commitment. I mean, how does a town, by just stop funding, I guess, if that's how a town gets out? Or, but going in, I can see that you would want a three-year commitment.
Right. So the IGA, and first of all, as local governments, we can't make fiscal commitments truly beyond the current fiscal year. So the IGA is a commitment, two, three years, subject to annual appropriation. So any municipality at any point in time can bow out, and that can be done in written notification and also by not funding it on each year as it comes up for decision. So that gives you a review point each step of the way to make sure that we're achieving the things we all said we were going to try to achieve.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right, we only have a couple of minutes. We have time for probably one more question, and then this is the first item on our agenda so we can go ahead after we've heard the agenda, continue this discussion. So Tammy, you want to go ahead and ask your question?
Sure, I would just have a concern about staff time requirements for this. I mean, we already have a staff that's working pretty hard. And also, would being on the board require that there be like a town board liaison? And would that put more time constraints or time, require more time from one of the Board of Trustees? Just basically, what kind of manpower is required from the town?
That's a great question, Tammy. So the IGA, in the IGA, each municipality gets a seat on the board. It's up to you who you appoint. We do intend this to be a working board. There will be committees, there, you know, the work will be broken down into committees. The Board of Directors itself is intended to be more of a policy board that will set kind of the broader direction, but not necessarily be hands-on on the day-to-day stuff, and that will break that out into committees. So your commitment would be to be on that policy board, and then anything beyond that, I think, is really based on interest and alignment with your own needs and desires. What we've talked about is that, you know, each municipality appoints somebody. It could be from your board, it could be somebody from your staff. I suppose it could really be a community member either, but somebody that's able to do the work, that would be important. We're not just asking for the funding, we're asking for the participation as well, because we think that's important.
Okay, thank you. Well, we are out of time. So what we're going to do is we're going to go ahead and close this up, open up the regular board meeting, and we'll carry on this discussion shortly. So I call the meeting to order. Roll call, or no, pledge allegiance, please. Everybody up.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. The Republican Party stands one nation under God.
Liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you very much. Let's move on with roll call.
Trustee Bear.
Here.
Trustee Beddinger.
Here.
Trustee Johnson.
Here.
Trustee Knutson.
Here.
Trustee Mack.
Here.
Trustee Patterson.
Here.
Okay, we are all accounted for. We have a quorum and can continue to move, continue the meeting. So first item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Okay, second?
Second.
All right, any discussion? All right, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, hearing none, that passes. Announcements, do we have any announcements before we go forward? Oh, wait, we have a Oh, wait, we have a hand from the audience. 2329, you have an announcement? Okay. Well, this isn't going anywhere. So we're going to go ahead and go to visitors and guests. So let's continue the One Delta County thing, and then we'll move on to any other visitors or guests that want to talk. So other questions from the board? Yes, Karen?
Sorry, I forgot. About the opportunity zone. How is that, has that brochure been made that they've talked about? Is that out? Have we got it? How's the progress going?
We're making good progress on that. Thank you for bringing that up, because it is related to this conversation as well. So we awarded a contract to a consultant in February. They began work in March. They were here in March. We held stakeholder meetings up in Peonia at the beginning of March, and then COVID happened. So it actually hasn't slowed them down much, but it has delayed their second visit, which was supposed to happen in May. We have them tentatively scheduled to come out in the middle of July, but they've continued to to work. So they have completed the first steps in the contract with us, which included a existing conditions assessment. And then they have met with numerous stakeholders and numerous potential projects. And what they're really doing right now is trying to identify key projects that we can highlight in the brochures and documents that they will produce for us so that they can begin working on all of the supporting information to back those projects up. And so in their visit in July, they're going to be bringing forward that list to us of what they see as the most viable projects for, really, we're talking about the low-hanging fruit, the easy projects that we can really just kind of put out there and try to attract interest to us. So we are a little delayed in that because of COVID, but the work hasn't stopped. They'll actually be more prepared when they come to talk to us because of that. And will be presenting us with more solid ideas than they would have been otherwise when they came back the second time. And as far as those potential projects in the town of Peonia, downtown redevelopment is obviously high on the list and something that can be used to support, you know, the things that you are all already working on. It's the easy, low-hanging fruit. We're also looking at how some business opportunities might exist and how we can help support those very specific businesses. And I'll, we'll hopefully have more to share very soon on all of that. So.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions from the board? All right, yes, Michelle.
Yeah, so the question I have is, for One Delta County, I know that each community has its own culture, its own opinion about what's the best fit. And so I'm wondering how that would be addressed by One Delta County. Let's say you've got a county location between Peonia and Hotchkiss that the organization thinks might be a good fit for a particular type of business, but the representatives from both Peonia and Hotchkiss are opposed to that development in that area. How do you, how do you reconcile that? How do you see that moving forward?
I think that'll have to happen on a case-by-case basis, and the board will have to decide how or if to be involved. I think the goal here is to really make sure that we are marketing and promoting the county broadly. You know, businesses ultimately are up to them how and where they decide they want to locate. I think the primary focus is business retention and supporting our existing businesses. And in those moments when we're dealing with business recruitment, there there's two components there. There's reacting when a business is interested in coming here. And and to that degree, you're somewhat subject to their interests and then providing them information. And so if if there ends up being a controversy around something like that, the current board of One Delta will have to decide how to handle that on a case-by-case basis. The other side of business recruitment is really identifying the types of businesses we want here and going out and actively recruiting them. So, you know, we've got a very strong emphasis currently in value-added food manufacturing that we've all been working towards. What are the ways that we can continue to recruit value-added food manufacturers and and get them here? And then, once we get them, that this is the right place to be, how do we help them find the best place to be? So I think part of that is then working together as a group to identify where we focus our proactive efforts. And there'll have to be unity on that. Again, that One Delta County Board will have to work through that. And obviously, there are differences in culture and differences in opinions, and the group's going to have to work through that. And we've had a lot of conversation about that and about how we will do that. And that, yeah, I think it'll just have to be handled on a case-by-case basis as those things come up.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions from the board? Yes, Steve.
I really like the idea that you're focusing on existing businesses. I think that's really strong. That really helps because that is our core right now. I'm pleased also that you mentioned living wage, because in my experience in small towns, you need to attract businesses that have people with disposable incomes. These minimum wage jobs just do not do our economy as much good at all. So I'm really glad to see that that phrase is in there. I had kind of an HR question on this. It looks like the county is supervising the person, yet the directors, that's one of their duties, is to terminate. So it seems like there's a conflict in there.
So Delta County retains all, for this project manager position that is subject to the IGA. Delta County will have all supervisory and HR-related responsibilities for that person. So hiring, firing, you know, liability for that matter as well. The Board of Directors will, they don't have hiring and firing. What they have is really, they're responsible for establishing a clear work plan that the project manager will then work on and then communicating with the county how the project manager is doing. So more of a performance review. But the county will do the performance review, but the Board of Directors will be part of that conversation and part of that process. It's really, to me, the equivalent of, you know, the project manager will sort of act in a consulting role to the Board of Directors. But in the bylaws for the Board of Directors, there is language in there about being able to, you know, how employ somebody, that is not the intent at this point in time, but is the goal. The hope is that we can grow investment in economic development and be financially, be financially stable and that an executive director can be brought back on in the future. So that language is in the bylaws to accommodate that future ability to employ somebody as an executive director. But that's not the position we're talking about in the IGA.
Okay, and then the last question, just concerns about the organization overall. I'm concerned, I I wonder what size of your working groups. So in my humble opinion, very large, possibly unworkable groups to try and have them make decision meetings. And one example of that, a lot of nonprofits and places I've worked with, the committee is restricted to just the officers, and your executive committee is really large. So I just wanted to point that out, that there might be some glitches. I know you're trying to be inclusive, and I I think that's really great. But sometimes the inclusivity gets so far that you stalemate your progress. So that's the only other comment. I really do think, I'm really impressed with the amount of work that's been put in since you came to us in the fall, and it's really impressive, the documents you've given us. Thank you for that.
You're welcome. And we've had a lot of conversation about that as well, Dave, and a lot of others share your concern. The intent is, again, so the Board of Directors will be really more of a policy-setting board. The executive committee will be responsible for the more month-to-month management and oversight. And then the doing will be done at a committee level. We really looked at like Region 10 and GJEAP in Grand Junction as functional models, where you can take that larger inclusive group and break it down into manageable bite sizes to get the work done. And that is our intent. And I suppose, you guys have all heard me say this before, none of this is written in stone. If there's anything that needs to be adapted or changed as we learn, we have to be committed to doing that. Amy Crick several times through this conversation over the last year has said, we have to learn how to fail forward as a county. And there may be some of that that has to happen here as we trial and error some of these ideas.
Great, thank you. Are we expecting to approve joining this today? Was that the expectation, Corinne?
No, the, what I was looking for today was because the board had voted not to fund and participate in One Delta County at that level in November. Having worked through it since then and been on the team, what tonight was, was just an opportunity for One Delta County to come back to the board and provide an update and all the work that's been done since the rough start and rough draft that we received in November and looking for overall a board decision on, what I was looking for is yes or no that the town wishes to proceed and participate in One Delta County so that we can amend the IGA, which is already already under legal review, to include Peonia and bring that back to the board for agreement and for funding. Like I put in my agenda summary, I think it's, what we're presented with today is not what we were, what we were presented with in November. A lot of work has gone in. I was really just coming into participation and understanding of the vision for One Delta County in October, September, October, November of last year. And I would had questions as well. I was unsure and understood why the board made the decision that they did. But I've seen a lot of work and effort go in. And when I was able to attend the meetings, when we were having them in person, it was extremely beneficial. And more than anything, I think you're not One Delta County if you're not One Delta County. And we need to be part of that. We need to have that seat at the table. And we're offered participation because we're part of this county and our opinions and our input matter and vow, and we have that value to the county, just like Larry brought up the fact that the county, we have that trickle-down effect and we benefit from things that benefit our county. Our county benefits from things that benefit us as well. And I think it's very important that we be part of that. And I would have come back to the board and and said we needed to be part of this. And it may very well have been later in the year or saying, you know, let's buy in in year two. But I've also got to witness some of the people that are on this group and are part of this group that have been building this and see them in action during this time of chaos and crisis in our, you know, in the world, but in our county with the pandemic and watch them in action as they, on their feet, are putting things into place to facilitate how they're going to be an asset and a helping hand to businesses that we have so that they don't shut their door, so people don't lose that part of of their identity in our county. And I, so, yeah, I feel like I'm on a soapbox. So I just really am passionate and supporting of it and have worked with Cindy to make sure that this is something that we can fit in our budget. And we have looked at those numbers. It's not in the packet tonight, but we still are seeing an increase in sales tax than what we projected before anything pandemic-related happened. And so we know that we can make this happen. So that's what I'm looking for from the board tonight is to say, yes, we want to be part of this. We want to help fund this with the just over $1,100. That's this year's commitment. And then that way, we can tighten up and finalize the IGAs and bring them back.
Well, then, I guess, just a second, Dave, I guess we can call for a motion to put this on the agenda for next time.
Yeah, I'd like to so move that we put this on the agenda for next time and that the town administrator put together her recommendations that she already so eloquently gave us, but also show us the dollar amounts and where those dollars might come from. Thank you.
Is there a second on that motion? All right, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to this particular issue? I have one hand raised from the phone number ending in 2329. Do you want to speak to this issue?
Yeah, I'm just getting on while I can. I tried to speak during the visitors and guests, and you didn't acknowledge me. And I just want to ask, at once this is over, can you go back to visitors and guests again?
Yes, we are going to go back to Suzanne.
Thank you.
And please, when you pick up the phone or start to speak, please identify yourself to the rest of the group so that everyone knows who is on the phone. Okay. Anybody who wants to speak to this issue? So we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? All right, this motion carries. Thank you very much, Elise and everyone for coming and putting together this amazing packet that you have put together and for really walking us through it. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thank you for the time.
You are very welcome. All right, let's go back to visitors and guests. All right. Suzanne, please identify yourself.
Hi, this is Suzanne Watson. First of all, I'd like to suggest on the, on the information about how to get onto Zoom, it's not telling us what to push to be unmuted, and I actually couldn't remember the number. I was scrambling through all sorts of numbers on my phone. So it's not on the, it's not on information on how to, how to participate. So it is star nine, I believe, is what I finally got. But I wanted to ask officers, appointed officers, have we done the officer appointments yet? Has the town appointed the officers that are required by state statute? I don't know if I missed that meeting or if it has already happened. It's the town clerk, the town treasurer, the town attorney. And I know we're working on the municipal judge, but that's another officer appointment. And I would like to read the state statute on that in case we haven't appointed them yet. It says, it's statute, well, our, in our code, it is 2-3-10, and the state statute is 31-4-401. And it says, said officers shall hold their respective offices until their successors are duly appointed and qualified, provided, however, that no appointment of any officer shall continue beyond 30 days after the members of a succeeding board or of trustees has taken the oath of office in compliance with 31-4-401. They can see shall be sold by appointment of the board of trustees. I'm wondering, I was expecting this to at least be on the agenda. It's a little late, but I was expecting it to be on this agenda. But as I said, maybe I missed it on, on, for instance, last meeting. But who's responsible for that? Is that the clerk or the town administrator?
Corinne, would you like to take this?
Yes, we did confirm that the last appointment was in 2018 and confirmed with town attorney that the requirement is every four years, because the term of office is four years, because of the staggered start and stop of trustees of every, so we hold an election every two years. It's every four years that an appointment, reappointment is required.
Okay, okay, thanks a lot. I have to reread this statute, but, okay, it doesn't, so it doesn't say how many years. Oh, so are you saying the individual ordinance, it says that this is a four-year term? Is that what you're saying?
No, I'm, I'm not in the individual ordinance. What I'm saying is that the information that's provided and the way it's been done historically is that it's every four years that the positions are appointed at a board meeting. And the last time ours was done was in 2018.
Well, I guess I'm confused because our ordinance says after the members of the succeeding board of trustees have taken the oath of office. And so isn't that every time a board is appointed, you reappoint? And that's one of the reasons why a former town administrator didn't want it to be an appointed office is because it's so shaky for, for these, some of these positions. But there are some that are required by state statute. And I, I don't see where it says it can be done every other board of trustee election. It says the succeeding board of trustees. So isn't this the succeeding one after their appointments two years ago?
Okay, Suzanne, we're not going to argue this at length.
Okay, I'm bringing it to your attention, and I'm wondering how, how can I get an answer to that? And how can I address that so I can hear an answer?
Suzanne, you were given an answer. Tammy, did you have something to say?
I do just want to point out that officers were also appointed in 2018.
I do just want to point out that officers were also appointed in 2016.
Okay. Beau, would you like to say something on this?
Well, as you guys know, we don't provide legal advice in an open meeting as kind of is our standard procedure. That being said, the take that we and the interpretation that we have is that it's for the intended term of the office, which is four years. And this year's election was a little bit unique in that we had a lot of candidates. But a big component of that was because we had a number of trustees that were filling in for vacancies, thus prompting more people being elected than is typical in a biannual election.
Thank you very much. Beau, and thank you for your question, Suzanne. It has been answered. All right, Deborah Spiegel, I believe you are up next.
Yes, so my question, I know that they have rewritten a new fence ordinance. And I thought it was going to be on this week's agenda, but it's not. So I'm asking if it can be on the next, the next meeting's agenda.
This is going to planning and zoning, is it not? That's the variance that's going to planning and zoning.
Yeah, variance is something different.
Okay, well, the holdup has been that we want to wait until we can do in-person meetings. We'll discuss that later this time and then we can determine whether we'll put it on next meetings' agenda depending on what we decide as far as the format for the next meeting.
Okay, so it is, thank you.
Okay, Dave?
I think we decided as a board that this fence ordinance per trustee bearers' recommendation is that we hold off on taking action until we have in-person meetings.
And depending on what the board does, that may be next meeting. Okay, any other visitors and guests? Okay, seeing none, let's move on to the consent agenda. And I have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second?
Second.
All right, any comments? Okay, yes, Michelle?
Just one comment. There was a note on the meeting for May 12th that there would be an informational document provided to the board or uploaded to the town's website for public viewing. And I'm not sure that that's happened. I didn't see that on the website. I think that had to do with CogGC.
All right. And any other comments or questions or whatever discussion? Okay, seeing none, I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, that motion carries. So next is the treasurer's report. And we actually have our treasurer here. Go Ross.
I must thank the town finance officer and the finance and personnel committee for bringing me into the 21st century. I stumbled through getting into this Zoom process and hopefully it'll work out. Madam Mayor, the treasurer's report is as follows. We reviewed dispersments and payroll and reviewed dispersments with the finance and personnel committee. I've been working with the finance officer on the preliminary review of the 2019 audit, which we are expecting to present to the board the second meeting of June. Lastly, we've been monitoring revenue streams and expenses. I've talked with our town administrator and discussed it with our town finance officer, and I would not recommend any actions at this time. Our finances seem to be in good order. That concludes my report, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Treasurer. Okay, and dispersments? Dave?
Do you want me to cover that, Karen? I'd like to make a motion that we approve accounts payable in the amount of $19,313.86. Approve a transfer to payroll of $19,445.60. Payroll taxes of $7,824.20. A direct deposit payroll of $19,445.60. And finally, payment of the Chase credit card of $3,011.97.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion.
Yes, Madam Mayor. I had several questions on the dispersments. I'll just ask the questions and then I'll get an answer at the end. The first one was Dairy Specialist. Second was Master Petroleum. And the third concerned all the United and Wind Water charges. If you could tell me what those are for, appreciate it.
Okay, so the Dairy Specialist was for chlorine supplies. I'm sorry, Bill, what was the second one?
Master Petroleum.
Fuel.
Yes, is that a bulk fuel tank, a fuel purchase?
I'm not sure of that. Maybe our finance officer can talk about that.
No, it's not. It's an individual, 90% of it is the trash truck. Fueling the trash truck.
So the trash truck fills up in Hotchkiss or Lazir?
Yes.
Okay, and then all the United companies and Wind Water charges? Were those related to the water line breaks?
Yes, exactly. All, all of the, all three of the invoices from United and all three of the Wind Water Corporation, all were part of those leaks.
Okay, that answers my questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
Any other questions? Yes, Michelle?
I had questions on, it looks like we had auto work done at a couple of places. We have Brook Service and Grand Junction and North Fork Service.
Well, the North Fork Service was fuel.
Okay.
And in the credit card report, you'll see a charge card. And we had a discussion of this in the finance committee because increasingly some of our vendors are requiring us to pay by charge card rather than them invoicing us. And so we're trying to figure this out in the finance committee, how to be able to do that because we typically like to see an expense, bring it to the council, get approval, and then pay it. But with a charge card, boom, it's gone. So our main protection is the card company itself. The finance officer assured us that if there are unapproved expenses or erroneous expenses, we can use the credit card company to pull that back. But we're wondering about that, too. We also bought a lot of ammunition. This last thing, it has nothing to do with the riots. It's target practice for our police.
Okay. My other question is Nimthor, N-I-M-T-H-O-R.
That was Rebar. I'm trying to remember what that project was. I think it was something to do with the, was it the park or in front of Town Hall? Karen, do you remember?
It's the coating on the sidewalks in, in front of Town Hall. And it's the sealer that they just put on the front of the Town Hall, the new concrete and over on the sidewalk in Polis Park Concrete.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions from the board? All right, seeing none, we have a question from the audience. Suzanne?
Hi, this is Suzanne Watson. I'm wondering about the PayPal, the last thing on the Chase card. There's a PayPal account purchased. Do we have a PayPal account, a town of Payon Ya PayPal account? And then do we know exactly what was bought through PayPal? It's worth $395 on Slide 15. It's the last transaction on the credit card.
It's a class.
A plant, a plat?
A class for the police department.
Okay. Can, can you spell that? I'm not understanding what you're saying.
Class, C-L, C-L-A-S-S, a class.
Oh, class, class.
For the police department.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, any other? Seeing none. Motion and a second. All in favor of approving the dispersments?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Oh, Cindy?
Not opposed. Please continue, I was just too fast.
Okay. No one opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Cindy?
I just wanted to also say that that class is reimbursed. We'll get reimbursed for that from post.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Onto unfinished business. First up is the town administrator contract. We have a contract that we have discussed previously and are looking to approve tonight. Do we have, let's get a motion on the table and then let's open discussion. Do I hear a motion?
I move that we approve the contract with the town administrator.
Okay, do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, any questions or discussion points we want to bring up? Yes, Dave?
I think it'd be more transparent to the public if the salary was listed on an annual basis rather than a monthly basis. It just, you know, everyone has to do the calculation times 12, what is that person making? So it just seems to make more sense, especially on an employment contract listed as an annual salary. And the second question I have is, I'm not, I'm not recalling whether that is an increase and if it is, how much it is. Thank you.
I believe it is not an increase. It is exactly what we have in the budget. Okay, and I saw Tammy, you had, hand up?
Yeah, I guess I just, I don't know if it's too late to talk about this, but I still have some concern about the relationship between the administrator and the police department because of the relationship between Neil and Corinne. The town code still says that, well, it doesn't say that she will not or that the, she will not oversee or supervise the police chief or the police department. And I believe that something was passed in the, by the previous board saying that the mayor would oversee the police chief. But I'm just wondering, is that the way it's going to be? Does the town code need to be changed? Do we need to discuss that at all? Or where are we with that particular subject?
All right, well, I've discussed this with Beau and we are currently putting together an MOU. The draft MOU has gone to Beau. He has approved it. It is now going to Dave and Karen for them to look at. And then it will go to Corinne and Neil. And then he'll bring, come to the board. And it basically says that the mayor is supervisor of the chief of police and the town administrator will have no supervisory role over that department. So it's in the works. It may end up being on the next agenda. I hope it's on the next agenda. We just need to jump through the hoops before we get there. Okay, Michelle, I saw your hand up.
Yeah, I just wanted to check in since we had two things on the agenda. One is the contract itself and the other is the evaluation process. Are we going to discuss both of those separately?
Yes, we are.
Okay. On the contract, I did have a specific question about section 10. The town shall bear the full cost of any fidelity or other bonds required. I'm just not clear on what that means for us. And I did some research. I found that it's a pretty standard clause, but I couldn't find it defined anywhere.
Well, I'm not exactly certain what that clause refers to. Corinne, do you know what that clause refers to?
I know specifically, it just states that the administrator would be bonded. And I'm already bonded in, in, under my clerk title anyway, because I deal and handle directly with money. And I believe that's the only thing that the administrator, as far as I'm aware, that's the only thing that's been previously bonded as well. That's why Ken was bonded. Beau might be able to provide more detail.
Beau?
It's specifically with the bonding that relates to her being a financial fiduciary of the town, particularly in her clerk role, which is still continuing under this contract.
Thank you, Beau. All right, Bill?
Yes, on the, the police chief and the relationship, is that going to be true for all or any or all relationships? I think that the language already included stipulation is true for all relationships in the contract.
Okay, and Ken, what other relationships do you see?
Well, I don't know of any. I just think it's a time to place, to put it in. I'm not referring to any particular relationships.
Okay, I believe the MOU does have a quote, the town policy about nepotism. And so this MOU is specific to the role to Neil and Corinne because that is the issue at, right now. And we have a nepotism policy, so that would cover the rest of those relationships because there's no other problematic relationship at this point.
Okay, thank you.
Dave, did you have something to say?
Well, I can't look it up fast enough, but I think there's something in the personnel handbook about that also.
Any other discussion from the board? Yes, Michelle?
So I have one more and this goes a little bit on the administrator position, but it brought it to my attention. So in the contract, we say that the administrator needs to provide 10 days notice for termination. At the same time, we've talked about the hiring process taking up to four months. So to me, that's a little bit concerning. And in light of that, I think it would be a good move for us to have just sort of a general application on the town website. Make it clear that we're not actively hiring, but that we are always accepting applications. And to have a process where we make sure any submitted applications get to the personnel committee so that we can have those on file should we ever find ourselves in a situation where we need to hire and, you know, may only have 10 days to start the process.
Well, and what we have done in the past is we have hired interim town managers because the process does take so long. And so an interim town manager is much easier and faster to hire than it is to do a full process, which is why we do that. From a personnel perspective, Dave, is that a good policy to have a call out there all the time?
Well, in the public sector, we always want to advertise our jobs and solicit candidates. And for a job like this, I think that's why the timeframe is so long because in order to be able to advertise properly and give candidates time enough to, to put together their packet and then for the board to be able to go through the hiring process, that's why it's a four-month thing. But it's frustrating, but I think we have a responsibility to the public to make sure that when we're ready to hire, we don't just pull the resumes that have been submitted to us and hire that that's fully vetted and transparent to the public. And that always takes time.
Thank you, Dave. And it's been my experience, too, that resumes get old, people get jobs, and it really does a disservice to the people who are looking for jobs to have something out there that we have no intention of filling. Any other discussion? Yes, Dave?
Oh, I just say that in my 30-year career, I've looked at too many resumes. I don't want them coming in unless there's a job.
Okay. All right, do we have any comment from the public? Okay, seeing none, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, that motion carries unanimously. Congratulations, Corinne. You are our new town administrator.
Thank you. You do have a hand up now.
It didn't go through. It didn't go through right away. There was a lag time. This is Suzanne. And so I did want to point out, I'm. And, um, so I did want to point out, I'm, you know, anybody that would read the town code, it's confusing, because you have this MOU. And I'm not quite sure where people find the MOU, because if you read the town code, even under the, um, chief of police, um, position, um, the code, the ordinance that describes the powers and duties of the chief of police, it says that he answers to the town administrator. Um, so, I, I mean, it's like, where are people gonna find the MOU and understand what the situation is? Number one. Number two, code enforcement. You know, when people have an issue with like weeds or, um, their neighbors' fence or, um, loud music or whatever, or just, um, uh, a situation that is a code enforcement issue, a lot of times people, I mean, they can fill out that form that, that goes to town hall and I assume the administrator looks them over and, or they go in and they say something at the desk. And are they told, "I'm sorry, I can't listen to this, because this is my husband and I can't have anything to do with it and you've got to trot down the hall to the police department." Or is it kind of relayed somehow to the police department? And I just don't understand how you can go home at night and not talk business at all with your husband and talk about, "I don't know how you can go home," or "I don't know how you can prepare a budget" that, um, that details police department spending and not feel personally involved, because it's your livelihood, you have, you have an interest in this. So I, I just wanted to say I'm still very leery about it. And, um, as far as the nepotism clause, it's not just for, um, married relationships, it's for people living in the same household. And there was a circumstance where this was happening for a year, um, until very recently when it was brought to one of the personnel committees' attention. So, um, it is in the personnel handbook and that is a violation of a contract, basically, when, um, I, so even though we have this in the personnel handbook, nobody seems to read it anyway, so it doesn't seem to apply. Anyway, just some frustrations I have with this whole, um, process. And, um, as far as, um, the hiring, I think Michelle made a good point on that. Maybe some people, if someone would really want this job, they'd take a job elsewhere. And to be re notified when the position comes back up, saying you can reapply for this, we're now accepting applications, we've seen yours, if you're still interested. I think it's always good to have a, a list of people who might be interested in the job. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. All right, moving on to the next, the personnel liaison group appointment. This is a mayoral appointment and we did receive, whoa. Michelle?
Sorry, I thought we were go, we were going to discuss the town administrator evaluation process as well.
We are, it is down farther on the, um, it is somewhere on here.
I think it was included in, um, discussion about the contract.
Okay, well then, my bad, we're moving back, okay? All right, thank you, Michelle, I appreciate that. All right, go ahead, I turn this over then to our personnel and finance committee.
Dave?
Karen? No, we, um, we really discussed like an evaluation procedure and wanted to keep it simple. Uh, there's a couple, um, evaluations coming up, we're going to be doing one that's due in October and another one due in January 1. And so in order to not make this too cumbersome, we wanted to keep it somewhat simple. So we listed the purpose of the evaluation, uh, the frequency, uh, the procedure, the town administrator will inform the mayor. The mayor will ask board members to complete an evaluation form and the evaluation form we're proposing is one page rather than five pages we filled out before. And it's, uh, much simpler. So our schedule is, uh, we're reviewing at least the, uh, plan for evaluating tonight. And I'd like the board to really look at what we've set as potential priorities for the town administrator, because it's really important that, uh, she has a clear, um, path forward on that. And, um, but that'll be included in the evaluation, so in your packet, under the town administrator evaluation, July 29th to September 30th, we listed objectives for the period. We've included, uh, commitments and, uh, projects that were completed from the time Corinne became interim up until now. And if there's others the board wants to add, we'd like that. And then on page 80 of your, um, packet, that's the evaluation form we're proposing. So a lot of it's narrative, qualitative stuff, and then we do have a 10-point scale down there to go off of it. So that's what we're proposing right now, we'd like you to look it over. Um, our commitment to the board was to give you an evaluation procedure by the 15th. So we're giving you this now and hopefully you can look at it over, chew on it and give us some good input, uh, at our next meeting, thank you.
Karen, would you like to add anything to that?
I think that's, um, we're just really asking for your input and your approval of the, of the form. Uh, we'll come back to you again in, uh, early Sep, in September and ask you to do the actual evaluation.
And how would you like that in, uh, communication to come back to you guys as far as input on what we see? Mills? What?
That would be fine.
Okay. Do you want any now?
I don't know if they've had a chance to review it or not.
Well, if anybody would like to make a comment now, you're on. Okay, Michelle?
Okay, so, uh, just a couple of comments, I noticed that the start date is July 29th, but I'm pretty sure the interim contract for Corinne started in August. So we might want to update that. Or I could have that wrong, that's possible, but if you could take a look at that. Um, I thought it was August for the first interim contract.
It was, sorry, it was, it was July 31st.
Okay, thank you. Um, and then I do think uh, it would be helpful, or at least in my experience, it's helpful to have a self-evaluation as well, so I wonder if that could be part of the process.
Okay. Thank you, Michelle. Anybody else would like to comment at the moment? Well, I do have one comment, I think that the objectives are, there's way, way, way too many. I think it needs to be much smaller and more concise and instead of dumping everything into the bucket, I think it needs to be maybe three, maybe four big objectives. And that's my comment. All right. Anything else we need to talk about on this? Okay. Anything from the public? Okay. Now we can move on to the next agenda item, which is the personnel liaison group appointment. As I was saying, this is a mayoral appointment, we did get one letter of interest for this position, which I was very pleased. And that letter came from Elaine Brett, who I think is highly qualified and will do an exceptional job on this committee. I would be open to hearing from the board, however, prior to making this appointment, so does anybody have any comments? Yes, Dave?
Um, I think Elaine is a real active community member, she's shown a lot of dedication in some of the work that she's done with us, especially around grants and some of the nonprofits in the valley. I think she brings a pretty good perspective, having the balance of, uh, employees and management, she has a good management perspective. I'm wondering also if we have formally appointed the other two members, which is someone chosen by the employees and someone from the, uh, personnel finance committee. Thanks.
Okay, Bill?
Yes, I was just going to comment. Uh, does this position require somebody within the community or are they within the town?
No, it doesn't have to be within the town limits.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and do, Corinne, do you know if the other two positions on the personnel liaison committee are appointed?
The, um, uh, I believe that the board did do the appointment of the, as far as designating that it would be the finance and personnel committee and that it was one member of the committee and the other would act as the, um, the stand-in if one, if the first wasn't available. Uh, we never did finalize the employees', um, appointment publicly in a meeting. Um, typically, if those have been accepted by the mayor, yes, because that is chosen by the employees and that has been finalized at the employee level.
Okay, well, if we can bring that to the board.
Choose Evan? Yes.
Okay. Well, can we just approve him now or do we need to agendize this?
I don't believe it needs to be specified on an agenda, because it's a, a designation that's made by the employees as who they want on the, uh, personnel liaison group as their representative. And, sort of.
Okay, then, uh, I guess Evan is appointed as the employee representative, who is taking lead, Dave or Karen on the personnel committee?
Dave has more personnel experience.
You're drafted, Dave?
Uh, yeah, Mayor Stewart tried to draft me several years ago and there was a conflict in, uh, timing and I was out of state. So I guess I, I'm here now, so.
Okay.
Karen will be my backup.
Okay. Well, we do have one comment from the public. Suzanne?
Hi, hi, this is Suzanne. I, I just wanted to say that definition, I mean, the description of the qualifications are, the community is such a vague word. I think it should be a little more specific, saying that anyone who is in town or out of town, I think the water board, you specifically referenced that they could be out of town, because different people can interpret community differently. And in fact, I, I actually looked it up. Um, the second, um, definition in the dictionary is a feeling of fellowship with others as a result of sharing common attitudes, interests and goals. And to me, that means you don't even have to live in the valley and you can be part of the community. So I think community is a little, um, problematic as a word and, um, I know we've already made the point, hopefully we'll never have to use the committee at all, that no employees will have issues. But I do want to say that word, community, is awfully vague. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Suzanne. Okay, well, in my position as mayor, I appoint Elaine Brett to the personnel liaison group. Thank you for doing that. Yes, Michelle?
So I just wanted to clarify, because the letter we received from Elaine does specify an interest in being both on the personnel liaison group and on the finance and personnel committee. We are only appointing to the liaison group, is that accurate?
That is accurate, yes.
Okay.
All right. Having done that, we're going to move on to the planning commission vacancy, this again is a mayoral appointment. And we have received three letters of interest, we received one from Lucy Hunter, who currently sits on the board. We also received one from Barb Peck, who currently sits on the board, and received one from Suzanne Watts. So again, prior to making the appointment, I would, uh, open the floor to the board for suggestions or input. Yes, Dave?
Um, if the planning and zoning commission is having trouble following the rules, I think Suzanne would be a great person to be on it.
Thank you, Dave. Anyone else? Yes, Michelle?
I have the similar comment, I think Suzanne has a deep knowledge of our code, um, and could bring a lot to the role with that.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Tammy?
Yeah, I echo those sentiments, um, I, she is incredibly familiar with code and knows probably more than most of us combined, so I would support that too.
Thank you. All right. Anything from the community? Or did you want to say something, Karen?
How many, uh, positions are you filling?
Okay, anything from the community? Yes? Deborah?
Um, I would also echo the same comments about Suzanne and being excellent with the codes.
Okay, thank you very much. I have thought a lot about this and I agree Suzanne has a deep knowledge of the code and, um, is a very active member of the community. However, Lucy and Barb have served on the planning commission and done an excellent job serving on the planning commission. Barb brings years of experience and knowledge to this position and Lucy is an engineer with expertise that you're not going to find most any other places. And so I am going to appoint Barb and Lucy back to the committee. And Suzanne, I hope you keep coming to the meetings, I hope you keep standing up and talking, because you are an important voice and we do appreciate it when you talk. Thank you very much. All right, moving on, we have personnel handbook modification. Addition of protection from retaliation, so let's do this in order, let's get a motion on the table and then we can go ahead and discuss it. Oh, Corinne, did you have something?
You have a hand.
Oh, thank you.
Hi, Mary, it's Suzanne. Um, so that, that's fine, um, I wanted to ask, um, the planning commission terms are staggered. So there is a seat coming up in the next, is it year or two years from now? I, is it a year from now? And, um, at that point, you know, it's possible for more people to apply for the decision as well. I just wanted to point that out to the board.
Yes. Thank you, Suzanne, and you're right, I'm not exactly sure when the next appointment is due, but correct.
It's coming up fairly soon, okay, thank you.
All right. Now, can we get a motion on the personnel or the pers, you know, personal handbook modifications and then we can discuss? Yes, Dave?
I'd like to move that we, uh, do the additional language for the personnel policy that deals with retaliation.
Okay, can we get a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion. Yes, Michelle?
Thank you, so I, I'm absolutely in support of this policy, um, against retaliation. I also would like to see us consider some kind of similar policy for, uh, community members to, to protect them. Um, I've heard from several members of the community that they've been afraid to make an official complaint or can have a concern noted at a public meeting because of a fear of retaliation. And that tells me that we still, in some, in some ways, have a bit of a trust problem with the community. And I think, um, having, having a policy similar to this that applies to members of the community and protects them from retaliation by the town could also be a benefit.
Okay, thank you. And, yes, Dave?
It sounds like a government affairs issue.
Well, Michelle, you may have to take this one up. You admit, go get them, guys. Do we have any other discussion about the policy itself? Yes, Bill?
I just had a question on, uh, you know, when you, when a employee turns in a complaint, uh, what is the procedure, does it automatically go to, uh, all members of the, uh, the liaison committee? Or does it just go, uh, to the town administrator?
No, it goes up the chain of command, Bill, so if it's, uh, one of Travis's employees, he would go to Travis, unless it's about Travis, in which case it would go to the next layer, which would be Corinne.
Well, my only concern is that, uh, you know, I, I realize that that's a chain of command, but perhaps the, uh, liaison, personal liaison committee should be notified that there is a complaint progress, uh, whether they act on it or not or anything, but I think that they should be included in the, uh, notification process.
Okay. Do we have any other discussion? Yes, Dave?
Um, we didn't include that trustee bear, because We didn't include that trustee bear because we really wanted to give the supervisors and the Town Administrator a chance to be able to resolve the problem before it got to the place of the Personnel Liaison. So I didn't want, or we, Karen and I, didn't, you know, think that having any complaint brought to us without the chance of the chain of command resolving it first was a good protocol for the system we have. The assumption here is that they, you know, knowing that the Personnel Liaison Committee is a place people can go to get a fair hearing, that would put kind of a, that would, that would put the pressure on the supervisors, managers, or Town Administrator to be as fair as they can in making a decision when an issue arises, but we did not put that in.
Okay, thank you, Dave.
Just one follow-up on that. All, is this, all the staff going to be notified of this particular change and documentation posted in regular workspaces?
Okay, we have a head nod, so I guess that you just, Corinne?
Yes, the staff is made aware of that. And I was just going to add, from the staff level, I would have a lot of concern with feeling that it was necessary every, any time that another employee at any level had an issue or a grievance with a direction or a decision that was made by their supervisor and that then in turn we would be required to notify that staff member. So as having a staff member, a member of the Personnel Liaison Group, I don't think that should automatically then make that staff member open and included in any and all grievances at a lower level or between, that's still at a department head and a staff member level.
Well, just as a comment on that, I'm not asking them to get involved in it. I just was suggesting that there's a notification process. So not necessarily that the Personnel Liaison Committee gets involved in it, but hey, they, they know it's out there and they're notified. Whether they get involved in it or not is up to the town staff, but just the notification process.
Okay, thank you, Bill. Tammy, you had a hand up.
What if that employee works on the Police Department?
That goes up through the police chain of command, so it's going to go to the police. If they have a problem, they go to the mayor, if it's about the police chief. And then the mayor will take it and then it goes to Personnel Liaison.
Does that need to be specified in this or is that just?
MOU, I believe.
It will be in the MOU, yeah.
Any other comments, questions, whatever? Okay, seeing none, anything from the public? Yes, number 4544, please identify yourself.
Delta Avenue?
I'm sorry, what's the first part of that?
They just, I just got it muted. This is Paige Smith at 215 Delta Avenue. And I don't have a comment about this new language in particular, but I was curious as to whether it's possible to see a copy of the town Personnel Policy in total. I've not done an exhaustive search of the webpage, but I wonder if it's possible to get a copy.
Corinne is, yes?
It's, it's not on, the staff's Personnel Policy is not on the website, but it is a public document.
So how would I go about, would I have to come in and get a copy or?
You can email a request and I can email it to you.
Okay, so you've got it electronically, you could send me. Great.
Yes.
I will. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, we have a motion and a second. If there is no further discussion, all in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose? Okay. That motion carries unanimously. All right. Now we're going to move on to item 10, Discussion Regarding Open Meetings and Public Participation. So Zoom works, granted, but it would sure be nice to have in-person meetings. I read the new variants that the County of Delta has put out and they're opening things up to 50 people. And if, if it goes through, it seems to me we could set up to put as many chairs as we can safely in Town Hall and then have the meeting livestreamed with the ability, people to call in if they don't feel safe coming to Town Hall. But that would give us the, at least the opportunity to do meetings again. And if, you know, there's a subject that may be hot enough that we can't fit 50 people in Town Hall, we might consider, we might consider the high school. I don't know about the Paradise there under this variance, then they would be allowed to open too, so they would be running movies and the like. But any other discussion on this? What do you thought, guys, think what we should do? Yes, Bill?
I, I think it's time to get back to regular public meetings. You know, it's been rare that we've had over a certain number of people show up at our meetings. I think we could scatter the seating around and such. We got into a hot topic, I think obviously with high schools available, perhaps even outdoor meetings.
Yeah, the only problem with outdoor meetings is that it's a streaming issue, getting phone calls, being able to livestream the meeting for people who can't attend. So that's the only thing with outdoor meetings. Anyone else?
I agree with trustee there.
Okay.
I would like to see us move back to in-person meetings when we can. We've got several topics that we've been pushing off on the agenda in anticipation of that, and I'd like to see us start moving forward.
Thank you, Michelle. Anyone else? Yes, Dave?
I know that when we have our in-person meetings, we have that huge table running around the room and I'm wondering if getting rid of that table would allow us to allow more people to be seated in the room without having this giant L-shaped table. So I'm just trying to think of the logistics of the room. It's going to be kind of hard for us as trustees to work on computers on our laps and stuff, but it would allow more people to come into the room at Town Hall. The second thing I'm wondering about is air circulation inside Town Hall because with COVID, you know, one of the major factors is stale air in long meetings inside places with stale air. So I don't know what the airflow is in our meeting room and that would be a concern for me if there isn't good airflow. Thank you.
Yeah, my only concern with taking the tables away is where do we do with the microphones? Because that directly feeds into our recording. And if you don't have a microphone, you can't be heard. So it's an idea. We can look at it and see if there's any.
We each bring a TV table.
Other comments? Yes, Michelle?
Well, just regarding airflow, we do have the ceiling fans in our meeting room, so I think that'll help. And I think if we, maybe we have a box fan that we could set up on one side just to keep the air moving in a particular direction, but we have several doors in and out of the space that we can open to facilitate that, too. But I think that's a good point.
Yes, Bill?
I, I think that Michelle is a good idea. We could put a fan in that back door, back by the kitchen area, pull air one way through the building. It really helps remove all the, all the stale air in the room.
Yes, Nick?
Yeah, I would be agreeable to that as well. Hold the meeting and if we can get some additional airflow through there, I think that would be great.
Okay, thank you, Nick. Tammy?
I know, I guess masks is an issue with me. I would like to see people have to wear masks unless possibly if they're, they are speaking. It would make me feel a lot more comfortable. I mean, I live with my 90-year-old mother. I have to be very careful. Just to, just wanted to throw that out there.
And we would need to figure out a way to sanitize the podium after anyone comes, unless we don't require them to go to the podium, but then it's a recording issue again.
We could all come up with a traveling microphone to be easier to sanitize between people talking.
That's true. Do we have a microphone like that? No, we don't. Okay. Would our system accommodate a microphone like that? If we were able to, like, borrow one from the Blue Sage or something?
I would have to check with our IT on how they're programmed. I know that we're programmed to a certain station, so I'm not sure. They are, I had on my report to report later, but we do have them coming out later this week and they are putting in the other bay of antennas for the sound system. So I can ask them about that while they're out here. And again, I, I think through the, just working through in the conversation, most of the things that would be my concern, such as you'd have to remove your mask when you're speaking so that the recording can pick you up. And we would really need, it needs to stay somewhat stationary because of the antennas. Yes, we could move out tables and things like that, which would facilitate more space in the room, but we also have to be cognizant about where you're sitting in order to have the microphones work. The other option is to look into setting up the tripod and trying to do a secondary recording through the iPad in case we're not using microphones. You know, when I was on the board, we didn't have microphones at all. We had no sound system in the boardroom, so we could try to set something up like that. They do tend to pick up sound pretty well. It may be a little bit of trial and error, but I think we can work through most of that. We can also turn the continuous vent on with our new heating and cooling system that was put in. That does have a vent system that you can turn on and it'll just run continuously as well.
Okay. Yeah. Any other comments from the board? Yes, Dave?
I just wanted to thank Corinne for her written analysis of that. I thought it was well done.
Thank you. Okay. Anyone else? We do have two people from the audience that would like to speak. Suzanne, you're first.
Hi, this is Suzanne Watson. Yeah, so I think the ma, I don't know if you've done any testing on the mic, on the podium mic. Is it really a problem? Really is it hard to hear people through masks? Another thing, when people are talking loud and they're trying to project their voice to the council, they could be spinning, so, you know, masks might be a very appropriate thing to ask for. And I think it's a small price to pay for having a meeting that's open to the public. I think there, I mean, I for one would be willing to wear one if it gave me the chance to interact with the council this way. The, you know, the podium could be a vector, someplace that you might be threatened by the fact that people are up close to that microphone. So the other thing is if the mask doesn't work, how about just putting a little covering over the mic? I mean, how about, you know, those little pillow packs that come in your Amazon packages with the air, air bubble packs? Have you ever tried tearing those apart and cutting one end off and just slipping that little sleeve over the mic? And maybe each speaker can just put a new covering on it. And if they're just careful not to touch the podium or if you have a bottle of alcohol that they could spray the podium if they felt like they needed to touch it. I don't think disinfection is that big of an issue. I, I think either wear a mask or maybe there's some ways to protect the surface. The, the tables in front of the trustees are a good idea. I think it gives them a little distance from, you know, it's a little social distancing there. It's a place to spread paperwork out, have your mics. But what I have noticed is the, the Town Hall has been reorganized, the meeting room, where before the board members used to sit to the north and they were less spread out. And I think the acoustics in the audience were a little bit better. It seems like they, the room was developed to have the sound coming from that direction. To me, it seems that the board member comments can be a little off sometimes, especially if, you know, with that different orientation, so we might want to look at that. And aside from that, COVID is going to be with us for a while. And a cold and flu season hasn't even gotten here yet. So we might need to close downtown government again, you know, Town Hall and resume the Zoom meetings. So, you know, while it's still relatively safe, I think it's important to open up and interact. You know, put the, put the, oh, well, I feel like, you know, this Zoom thing, it's like you're in a castle surrounded by a moat and the, what is that, draw, draw gate or draw bridge or something has been raised up and there's no access and we're kind of yelling back and forth between the windows and on the other side of the moat. So, I mean, I, to me, it would be important to open up again while we can. I did talk to Ken Nordstrom today. He's the Health, the Director of Health down in Delta County. And he said, at this point in time, the, there's not a lot of virus circulating in the community. So it's, it's pretty safe if you practice the social distancing, the masks. And, you know, it's up, we can make the rules. We can make, you know, the rules that we want to see. For all I know, you might want to temperature test people when they come into the room. They do that in doctors' offices right now and it seems to be rather successful. So I, I'd really appreciate if the council, while the virus is still pretty low in the community and it's a fairly safe thing to do, if we could find a way to safely open up the meetings. And I don't think that we'll see really a packed room anytime soon unless you bring a huge issue on board. Usually not very many people attend the meetings and, anyway. So another thing is recording the meetings. Maybe we could commit to permanently recording the meetings and getting rid of the minutes. I think that's an option and that would require one less employee to be in the room. You know, if the minutes were recorded from now on, which we essentially do. It's, I don't think it's official, though. So thanks a lot. I'd really appreciate it if you did open up the meetings as soon as we can here this summer. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Suzanne. All right, Deborah?
Yes, so, yeah, I was thinking that people could be required to not touch anything on the podium and one of you turns on the microphone and leaves it on when, when the people come up to speak. Sorry, now I'm losing my voice. But I also would like the option to speak from home. So if it was a hybrid and there, you all were in the Town Hall and I was talking, would you be able to still hear me or would I just be typing in?
I don't know. Corinne?
We'll hear you now.
Part, part of our updated updates that are taking place in the community room includes the installation of a telephone system that would be in there. So again, it may be a little bit of trial and error as far as being able to present the meeting via Zoom. When we're in the building, we are able to livestream the meeting, but you, you may not be able to be on the video feature, but you would be able to call in and participate in that same function.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Deborah. Stephen, heen it.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Has anyone, you know, I was listening to the economic development proposal and the focus on having more value-added food packaging, food manufacturing. I feel that the, the Valley and especially if it's led by the town of Peonya, we have a whole lot of sustainable food being grown, a lot of interest in that. My question is, has anyone on the town level, have we applied for any of this federal money that's specified just for the food security? I, I think that the town is, it's an ideal situation for the town to be involved with some of the churches that already have a food pantry operation going on and.
Stephen, we are talking about open meetings.
Okay, sorry, I thought this was a general thing about the virus. I, I digress. I apologize. I think it would be great to have open meetings. I think it would be great to have open meetings. Thank you.
Great. Yes, Stephen, if you want to bring this back, we do have the visitor section at the beginning of the meeting and you can talk about anything you'd like. So I encourage you to do that, is to show up at the beginning of the meeting. Thank you. All right. Any final discussion? Well, I think we're pretty much agreed that depending on what the county does, if the county gets their variants and we can go up to 50 people, then we'll, we'll give it a shot for a hybrid meeting next time around. Let's see how long it takes the variance application to go through. Thank you, everyone, for your input. All right, new business, Minnesota Creek sewer line mitigation bid award. Who would like to speak to this one? Corinne, Bill, Tammy?
Well, I can speak to it. The, maybe Travis would be better to do this online.
This is a Minnesota Creek reclamation of a sewer line that has been trying to be washed out. It's not washed out yet, but the sewer line is exposed. And it's one of the projects that we need to get done before it does wash out, so we don't have any state health department regulations come back on us. We did get, I solicited five bids from different contractors. We did receive three. Tribble's excavating is the low bid. They are a good contractor that I've worked in with quite a bit, and I would recommend them.
Okay, thank you, Travis. Bill, Tammy, would you like to add something to that? Tammy?
Yeah, we did get a chance to look at those bids today and we had discussed that, I believe it was Tribble had the low bid. They're a local company. They've done work for the town before. That was kind of where I was leaning is just going with the low bid. It's a good reputable company, local. So that's, that's my recommendation. That's, that's what I'm leaning towards.
Okay, thank you, Tammy. Bill?
Yes, I was going to rec, say that this is a project that needs to be done sooner rather than later. We don't want that sewer line to become disrupted. And that I think all three of the bidders were qualified bidders. They were all in this, within the same range. Tribble happens to be the lowest bidder and I think he's a qualified bidder, so therefore I recommend that the council select Tribble.
Okay. Well, why don't we get a motion on the table and a second?
I move that we select Tribble and Sons LLC to do the Minnesota Creek Sewer Line work with their bid amount of $21,600.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion on this? Yes, Dave?
I just wanted to make a comment on the packet. We got every single page of every single bid on the packet and it would have been nice to see, here's the bid, you know, here's the bid packet, and then the pages that the individual companies put in, instead of having to wade through the packet so many times. So it was just a suggestion to save our time when we're reviewing stuff that the only thing we really needed to see is what the contractors bid on and if they signed it. Instead of seeing every single page of every single piece of that engineering report. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Dave. Any other discussion? Okay, seeing none from the board. Anything from the public? Okay, seeing none from the public. We have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, that motion carries. All right, we're going to go on to resolution 2020-11 Local Disaster Declaration Extension. We are looking to extend our disaster declaration to, I have to find the page, or somebody can remind me as to what date we're talking.
25th.
Thank you. And part of the reason we're going to do that is to allow us to do things like number 13 on our agenda in a more expedited manner. And also if there are any funds that are available, as long as we have the disaster declaration in hand, then we can apply for funds. Can we get a motion on the table and then we can discuss this? Anybody like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. I move that we approve resolution 2020-11 to extend the local disaster declaration.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Okay, discussion.
Yeah, Mary, are we just doing this to reap the benefits of any potential windfalls that we could receive back for COVID?
In part, and in part too, it's our ability then to do the administrative modification of liquor license in a more expedited manner than to have to go through further steps. As long as we have the disaster declaration in place, we are allowed to do it faster.
Okay, thank you. I'm, I'm still thumbing my way through all the bids, so I'll get there in a minute.
Me too.
Page 191.
Thank you.
Apologies, I did think about that after the fact.
All right. I was just glad we still weren't making Xeroxes of all this.
Oh my God, no kidding. All right, Dave?
You know, when we originally did the disaster declaration, there was a lot of discussion among the board about those who had trouble paying their bills, those in water shut offs and those types of things. And we really haven't publicly addressed on the last, I think, two extensions, whether we want to continue that policy or not. So I want to make sure we're keeping that on the table about the people that are less able to pay their bills and it might be under financial hardship that they could be given some bit of relief as long as we have an emergency declaration in place.
Corinne, I'm assuming that that is still in place since we haven't done anything to change it?
Late, the late fees are, have still been waived and the town hasn't provided any disconnects. The, to continue any other aspects that were discussed, which the only other thing that was discussed was the waiving of fees that for people who are paying online. And that was the only thing that hasn't continued because that was a one-time approval at the board level, although we didn't actually see a large increase in online payments from that offer. So to continue as far as not charging late fees and to continue, well, to still not turn off, I'm trying to think of the appropriate words to use, in line there, to continue allowing people to be delinquent without disconnect would require the board to state for how long they wanted to continue to do that.
So I'm assuming that would need to be on the agenda for next time.
We can put it on the agenda for next time. We wouldn't have, we wouldn't have applied any fees by then.
Ah, okay. Dave?
Would it be possible for me to amend the motion adding that to it?
Is it? Yes.
It would be, I think what Corinne is saying is that there's no application in terms of any fees that would be collected. Corinne, correct me if I'm wrong. So therefore, if we have it on the next agenda, it would kind of be a no harm, no foul. Which would be my preference because it's noticed.
Okay. Okay. Any other comments or discussion? Okay, seeing none. Anything from the public?
There's a bunch of howling going on out here.
All right, since there's nothing from the public, we have a motion and we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Okay, motion carries unanimously. All right, resolution 2012 Administrative Modification of Liquor License and Encroachment for Outdoor Dining in Town Right-Away. Corinne, do you want to just give us a quick update on this?
Sure. So this is the resolution that was discussed, it's, I think it's been discussed at a couple of meetings and I had the conversation also at our last governmental affairs and public safety meeting regarding administrative capabilities to look into how we could facilitate outdoor dining and extensions of existing local liquor licenses to facilitate our restaurants that are reopening the opportunity to have a larger area that they would be able to serve customers. That way they can appropriately adhere to the distancing requirements and get people out in the fresh air. And it may also be an option that would bring someone out and have them come and frequent a restaurant that they wouldn't be comfortable to do in an enclosed area and have that outdoor seating. And so in order to offer that, going by the guidelines that have been provided specifically when it comes to the liquor enforcement division, we can provide a, a change and a resolution to allow outdoor dining and an extension of a liquor license while we're underneath the local disaster order. This resolution was provided to me by the town attorney and modified to reflect the town's codes and that, of course, the town in general. And what this does is allows the administrative offices to, in conjunction, of course, with the Board of Trustees and the Governmental Affairs Committee, to create a plan on how businesses could extend outside of their brick and mortar location into the right-of-way to offer services.
Okay. Can we get a motion on the table?
I'd like to move that we approve on resolution number 2020-12, amending the local disaster declaration to provide for administrative modification of liquor license premises and the issuance of enroachment licenses to facilitate outdoor dining within the town right-of-way.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
All right. Any more discussion? Yes, Dave?
How are we going to let all the restaurant people know that we've done this and who's going to work with them?
That, I was going to notify them individually and provide them the requirements as given and implemented by the liquor enforcement division. As well as notify their neighboring businesses, because I do want to be very cognizant of taking away parking or blocking any, any areas that other business owners might need for, specifically when I'm, I'm talking about, thinking about the, the Hayes Drugstore and Pharmacy and things like that. So we want to make sure that we work within their business hours as well, so we're not impeding their business by enhancing someone else's.
Yeah, that's important. Thank you.
Any other comments, questions, discussion? Yes, Michelle?
I just love this idea. I think it's great for the town. I really appreciate Corinne's work on it and responsiveness to concerns in the community around this. And I would love to see it extend even beyond where we're at right now with, with COVID-19 and have maybe regular sidewalk dining, street closures, things like that. Thanks.
Thank you, Michelle. Anyone else? Okay, I was contacted by a member of the public who suggested that we pull the restaurants to see about doing a street closure before we vote on a street closure, because some of them, many of them may not want to do it, but that's down the road. At least they have the option.
And I can add to that. I had one business owner, one restaurant owner come in and did, just stated to me that he wasn't willing to participate and didn't want to participate. And I did explain that this would be an offer to restaurants and another option, an additional enhancement. It's not a requirement to participate. And that, of course, that would be up to each individual business owner if they wish to offer outdoor dining.
Okay, anything else from the board? Okay, seeing none. Anything from the public? Yes, Paige?
Hi. Okay. Am I unmuted?
You are.
Okay, good. Thank you. Hey, I'm, I'm sorry I missed some of the discussion about this particular idea, but is the, is what you have in mind is that tables will then be on the sidewalk, but will still have parking in the street and cars going two-way in the street?
I think that's completely up for discussion. All we're doing now is allowing the, doing our part to allow the businesses to apply for the extension of their liquor license if they so desire.
So I, I guess I'm just envisioning, we don't, the sidewalk isn't all that wide. So if there are tables on the sidewalk and I have to walk right by the people dining, it seems like it's defeating the purpose of people being apart. Whereas if you turn the street, you know, I, so I guess I would say I'm against this as currently written, because I don't see it as being particularly protective for pedestrians. Since we can't, if the cars are still parked up against the curb, we don't have any other place to walk besides next to the tables. And there's no, there's no information here about how far away from the curb can you be and things like that. So I feel like you're not really social distancing if that's it. But if you plan to go further and perhaps turn this part of the street to get rid of the parking and have, and no parking on the street or just driving one way, I could see this being a good idea. As in the picture that I saw somewhere, maybe it was Facebook, some other town that did it, where they were able to have tables out in the street. So people could still walk down the sidewalk and not have to be right next to the people eating. Thank you.
Corinne?
So just to add information, we still have to adhere to the Americas with Disabilities Act. And so in, I, be under section two, it does state that the, it would be to create, review and approve the temporary permits to encroach. And all of those specific items that were just mentioned would have to be reviewed and a determination made on how we would facilitate that. My initial thought would be that the extension of the liquor license from the door of the business, I'm sorry, my computer's being very weird right now, to, from the door of the business to the tables has to include the sidewalk as an area that they would be able to pass over. You have to have a continual extension of a liquor licensed area. They can't pass through an area that's not licensed in order to get to another area that is. But I wouldn't envision any tables or seating being offered on the sidewalk itself. It would be a modification of, of the way traffic moved through the road and where parking was permitted.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other? Okay, seeing none. We have a motion in a second. All in favor of resolution 2020-12, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that motion carries. All right, we are on to staff reports, administrators' report.
Okay, give me just a minute to switch my hats and grab my other papers. All right, so I was going to provide, of course, testing updates. Let me see, I have that open here. The last update we received was yesterday where Delta County Health Department was reporting two new cases, bringing the total case count to 76 with 67 individuals now recovered. Forty-six individuals have tested positive. Thirty individuals have been in close conduct, contact with an individual who has tested positive and have experienced COVID-19 symptoms. One death is still being reported in the county. The, I wanted to notify that I received confirmation from DMEA that the streetlight delivery is scheduled for mid to end June. They don't have an exact date. As soon as they have the As soon as they have the exact date for delivery, we'll be able to get on the schedule to do our streetlight replacement, but we do anticipate that to begin next month. The town telephone system and sound system in the community room will be updated later toward the end of the week. I already provided that update during one of our agenda items. The, I apologize for not having updated with the COGCC letter. I will get that on there, but I have updated the website with a list of some of the summer projects that will be ongoing and that the town is working on and will continue to work on. If anyone hasn't been by Pulis Park when you're out in the vast outdoors, definitely go by and look. They're making good progress there. They've done a lot of cleanup. The lights have been installed in the back wall to help facilitate safety in the evening and ambiance that lighting provides when you're in a park after dark. And the wall has had some pretty substantial repairs made to that. It will be painted in the near future. The playground equipment was disinfected yesterday, so the playground equipment has been cleaned since the parks were closed. We do plan to do this on a somewhat consistent basis. What that will look like exactly, I am not sure yet. We're still working through the details. It is pretty timely and those chemicals and things that we purchased to do the disinfecting can get expensive. Those are items, though, that we are tracking under our COVID-19 spending. With that in mind, I received today the preliminary draft version of the intergovernmental agreement that we'll need to do with the county regarding the dispersment of funds through the CARES Act to county. The way that that's set up with DOLA is that the funds would be dispersed to the county and then the county would disperse to the individual communities based on actual expenditures and reimbursements. And what all can be submitted for reimbursement is still, they're still fleshing all of that out. We also have a one-month period to fill out the online opt-in through the DOLA website, which I will be doing. And once that, I plan to review that draft IGA and once they have a somewhat final draft version, of course, that will be before the board to make a final decision on. And just a few items that were included in the second variance request from the county, in case everyone hasn't had an opportunity to review that, are gathering sizes increasing from 10 to 50. Theaters, churches, restaurants, nonessential retail, gyms and recreational facilities will be able to open or increase their service to 75% capacity. Outdoor facilities would be open for use with no limit on participation. And all noncritical office-based businesses and noncritical manufacturing facilities would be allowed to staff at 100%. So those are just a few of the highlights from that variance request, and that's all I have.
Dave, you have a question?
I'm curious how this new change may affect picking in the park. I'm assuming that can go on then. And then it's kind of too bad about cherry days, because it sounds like that could have been held.
You know, maybe not, Dave, there are still 150 max on participation, so we'll see what happens for picking in the park. Okay, any other questions for Corinne? Okay, seeing none, let's move on to Public Works Dallas.
Hi. Um, like Corinne said, we are disinfected all the parks. The bathrooms are open now. We got those all cleaned and stuff. So that's going pretty good. Me and then new town, or not town clerk, but new clerk that we hired for the, between the Public Works and Police Department, we're working on a new inventory system. We're going to break our inventory system up on the Public Works part of it to multiple different deals. We're going to break it up to water treatment, water distribution, sewer treatment and sewer collection. And then we'll have another section of streets, storm sewer, parks. Then we're still working on getting all of our CCR done for state compliance and everything else. We do have JDS working with SGM right now on our, well, two of our projects that we're working on. They are working together right now to get the hydro or the mapping system done and also the pressure analysis done. And we should be getting somewhere around the end of next week or the following week to be able to get all that completed. And then that's all I have unless you guys have any questions.
Any questions? Yes, Bill?
I had a question. I haven't, I didn't visit the park last week, but the week before it looked like the park was getting fairly dry, especially there in the west side of the park where the sun is shining, not on, directly on the grass. Looking pretty dry. Have you made plans to get that water or have you watered that already?
We have set a schedule up to where they're watering more often now. Lee's Park, Town Park, Pulis Park and also Apple Valley Park have been on a schedule now. And I have emphasized that they need to stay on their schedule and make sure that everything gets watered.
Thank you for that, because I thought that the park was looking extraordinarily dry.
Yes.
Kami?
Yeah, I don't know if this is going to be covered in the committee report, but it'd be nice to have an update on the closure of Main Street. They're doing block of Main Street and just let people know what's going on with that.
Main Street closure was due to a COVID failure on Peony Ditch. We haven't, I have, I've got prices and everything to do the project. I still am getting a hold of Peony Ditch and some other people on if they're going to help pay for some of the projects. And we also are waiting on Bo to make sure, to see if we're going to be completely liable, completely liable for the project or if Peony Ditch is liable for some of the costs.
Any other questions?
Yes, I had one question. And consider something, it's something that I would like to see Public Works do and that's, we had a rash of water line breaks up in dry gulch and it seems to finally resolve itself with the installation or repair of the PRV valves. But I would like to see a summary of the money we spent up there. You know, just running through a quick look at the stuff on the dispersance tonight. We spent quite a bit of money on that, you know, over $4,000 just on supplies. But if you could put together a summary of what it costs for supplies for the town labor and also the contractor, I would be, thank you.
I will put that together. It's well over $4,000 and I can get all that put together and have it ready for the next board meeting.
Yeah, you could do that. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay.
And Mick?
Yeah, I'm just wondering if we have any update from the engineering company on the water mitigation, how that's coming?
Yes, Corinne?
Are you speaking about our asset inventory and infrastructure analysis? The JDS Hydro is doing the infrastructure analysis and they are, they've made good strides. They are, have requested some information from SGM that SGM will be providing to them so that they'll be able to complete. And that's part of their mapping that they've been out working on. SGM has done a few draft versions to start showing what the mapping will look like and they've sent that so that we could review them, but that's just happened very frequently. And they are continuing to work on both of those projects and we still anticipate a, initially, we were anticipating preliminary drafts to be presented to the board late summer. It may be into the fall, late fall because of delays due to the pandemic, but they are on task and are working on both the projects.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, any other questions? Well, I have to give kudos to the Public Works people, because they did come out and did a magnificent job on Lee's Park. They did start watering and watered it several times and starting to green up nicely and did a beautiful job mowing and weeding and making it look really nice. I haven't had a chance to go by Town Park to see if they did as well a job there. All right, next up is police report, Neil?
Hello. So the police department has lost an officer and we are actively seeking an individual to join our department. At this time, I've received three applications, but none of those applications are post-certified. We have a couple more weeks before the deadline for the applications that we put out. We can always continue that longer if we need to. Officers have also been completing a lot of code enforcement and tis the season for marijuana compliance checks. Just a reminder, make sure if you're growing marijuana to have it locked and enclosed and no more than 12 plants at one residence. If you have any questions on grows or anything like that, please feel free to call the police department. Also, I've been working with Bo, Michelle and Dave on the search for the municipal judge. For more information on that, I will go ahead and turn it over to Michelle.
Just a quick update on that, you do have a couple of resumes in the packet. This has been a difficult process. We've had some really great candidates and we've gone through an extensive interview process with them. We are at this time ready to make an offer. We'd like to hold off on providing any more information until we can speak to that candidate and we plan to bring back the details at the next meeting.
Okay, thank you.
And that's all I have.
Okay, any questions for the chief? Seeing nothing from the board, we do have a member of the public, phone number 2329. Do you know how to?
Am I muted? Oh, I'm unmuted. Okay. Hi, Suzanne, I wanted to ask Neil which officer left? I have two questions and that was one for him.
Okay, Officer Basil?
Okay, and then my other question is, you said you're interviewing the judge candidates and I saw two resumes in the packet, but how many applied? And are you narrowing them down yourselves or are you just interviewing them and then making a recommendation, but letting the whole board make the decision? That was my other question.
The board will have to appoint the judge. We are making a decision based on the interviews that we have completed, recommendations that we've completed.
Okay, so you're making a recommendation, but you're not making the decision. You're just recommending which one you guys think would be the most appropriate?
Correct.
Okay, and so far I see there were two resumes in the packet, but is that all that have applied so far or are there more?
There was four. Go ahead. Are you there?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So there was four. Yep, and then we picked the top two and we're going with that.
Okay, but I mean, isn't this a board decision? Doesn't the board get, the whole board get to make it? I didn't think in committees you could make a decision like that and already narrowed down the candidate.
Michelle, do you have anything on that? Or Dave?
Just to clarify, and I have spoken, the committee isn't making the decision. The committee is presenting our recommendation to the board. We've chosen to include the resumes of the top two candidates for board review in this packet, just so the board and the public have that information.
Okay.
I might defer to Bo on whether we would provide all four resumes in the public packet, if that's something that people are interested in, but the committee will make a recommendation at the next meeting.
Okay. I mean, I was just wondering if we get to know who the point, the candidates are and all that kind of stuff, yeah.
So we can certainly include the four applicants in the final packet, but I do feel like that the committee was tasked with being able to make a recommendation to narrow down from the four applicants to the two.
Okay, but the board is ultimately going to vote, looking at all four applicants, correct? Because otherwise, the committee would be making a decision by itself to just pick out two and give those two to the board.
Dave, go ahead.
Yeah, I'd just like to remind Suzanne that the board charged us to do this work for them on their behalf. And we looked at candidates and we found two candidates, for various reasons, did not match what we are looking for in a judge. And so there were only two candidates left after that. So yes, we did make a decision, but I think the board expects us to make that decision, just like Public Works. When they're looking at bids, they might throw out some bids and say, you know, these two, these two or three bids don't really fit. We're going to only forward these two bids. So, you know, I think as a committee, we're charged to make a decision about these things. It's too cumbersome for seven people. They interviewed four people for a job.
And the other thing?
This was just an appointment. That's why I was wondering about if the state statute had anything to say about, you know, letting us know what your parameters are and how this process is happening.
Thank you, Suzanne. All right, anything else, Chief Ferguson? Oh, Bill?
Yeah, I just had a question on a, on one of the terms in the police report is ACT. I hadn't seen that before. What does that stand for?
It's an active investigation. Usually I take those out, so it was a mistake that it was left in.
Okay, thanks.
All right. Anything else? If not, let's move on to the mayor's part. Thank you very much, Neil. And I am working on still putting together the retreat. I have spoken to a facilitator. Now it's a matter of trying to find the money to pay the facilitator and to negotiate a charge. And once I get that done, then I'll come back to the board probably in two weeks to get us to try and schedule something. So please think about if you would rather do the retreat, it'll be a two-hour block of time. We can do it after 3:00 on a weekday or we can take some weekend time, whatever you would prefer. So if you would give that some thought, I would greatly appreciate it. And that's all I have. So committee reports, finance and personnel?
I think we reported a lot tonight.
I would agree. Government Affairs and Public Safety. Michelle, Mick?
So we last met on May 27th and we will be meeting again tomorrow. At this time, we're planning to hold that meeting on Zoom, so we'll get those details out.
Actually, that meeting will be Thursday.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you, Mick. We did reschedule to Thursday.
Right.
Thursday afternoon. Thank you. At the last meeting, we discussed the draft ordinance for retail marijuana and that I believe will be on the agenda for the board to review at the next meeting, the second meeting in June. We also reviewed the fence ordinance, made some changes based on public input and that has been sent to Bo for review and before it comes back to the board. We talked about food trucks and we will plan a public meeting once we're able to do that for community discussion. We talked about dogs at large and there are some promising options for local facilities on that. The town, we're also going to look into whether there might be some animal control grants that the town would qualify for. We'll meet again, like I said, we'll meet Thursday, as Mick said. And we are planning to talk about billing inspection fees and income at that meeting and we'll bring a list of possible remedies for the second meeting in June. And Mick, did I miss anything?
No, you got it all. I have nothing to add. No, you got it all. I have nothing to add.
Okay, thank you guys. All right, next, Public Works Utilities Facilities?
Yes, we met, Tracy, Mick and I met with the staff on this first of June. Items we discussed were the Minnesota Creek and the sewer line project that was on the agenda this evening. We talked about the water fill station that's currently at the town barn and the current state of being able to get cards. And that is an item that's going to come up to the board again because the system's going to need to be replaced sometime in the future. Discuss the status of the 404 permit to fix the sewer line project and the river. I still have not received that. Discuss the culprit for the Main Street and the Peony Ditch problem. That's something that's going to cost us a little bit of money and probably going to be done this fall. Discuss street funding, which streets will be surfaced. It was stated to us that there's approximately $200,000 available for street repairs, so we need to think about how we're going to repair streets. And we discussed the waterline breaks of Dry Gulch and the P R V valves repair. And then a brief discussion about the water study, which we heard about tonight. It's moving forward and that's all I have unless Tammy has something else.
I think you covered it all.
Okay, wonderful. All right, space to create. There's nothing to report there. And Tree Board, Ms. Mick, you're up again.
Okay, the Tree Board met on June 3rd via Zoom. Just a reminder that the Tree Board does have a website. It is peonyatreboard.org. Although there is, it's still undergoing some work. It is not finalized, but there is some information on there, some nice links, some photos, et cetera. And some of you may remember Sick Tree Day that the board used to have back in the late 90s and into the early 2000s. They are trying to bring that back and they have a Sick Tree Day tentatively set for July 11th. And it is going to be a Tree Board event due to COVID-19. The state foresters, the state forest service does not want to send anybody out into the field at this time. They could, Vince Urbina, State Forester Vincent Urbina said he could possibly look at photos and other information from the event and make some determinations. So it is possible to get some professional advice on your trees out of this. It will be open to people in the Peony area, not just in town, but in the surrounding area, but not Hotchkiss, you know, a little too far just for, for time, for travel purposes. Each, they will be at some point, assuming that this does all go forward. It's not 100% certain. But they will be accepting, oh, what do I want to call it? You can like book 20-minute sessions. That would, if this does all happen, which they're hoping it will, that would be put out on Facebook, D C I shopper and on the, hopefully on the town website and town Facebook page. Jim Leeser will also, he's an entomologist. He writes a weekly column for the D C I and is on the Seed Ridge Tree Board. He said he could attend and may be able to answer some questions about bugs. So this is a, they call this a practice run for next summer, so they hope that by next year they'll be able to do a full-on Sick Tree Day with experts and foresters and so forth. So just watch for information on that. And the Tree Board is also working with Peony Elementary School to plant some trees on school grounds this fall, but that's in its very early stages and nothing is definite yet because of COVID. And that's pretty much it.
Okay, thank you, Tammy. All right, we have reached the end of our agenda and I believe that I have the power without a motion to adjourn the meeting. So the mayor speaks and the meeting is adjourned. Thank you everyone for your participation, especially all the committee people or the citizens who called in. Thank you very much. Yes, Corinne?
You have a hand up.
All right, Paige, sorry.
Hi, I am so sorry to stop you from adjourning, but I wanted to get in before you adjourned. Because I'm very interested in trying to attend some of the committee meetings, but I have no idea when they meet. I get emails about some, but not all. Is there any way that these are, do you meet, do certain committees meet on certain days at certain times? Twice a month? Could you put it on the calendar? Where do I find out where everybody's meeting and where I am?
That is a good question. We have not had a good system for doing that as yet. Maybe we can look at our new website and get it somehow up on the new website or the calendar or something. Corinne?
I can put them on the calendar. There, we have a set schedule pretty much for the governmental affairs and public safety. We've set at 2 P M the Wednesday following board meetings, of course, subject to schedule restrictions. This one won't be until Thursday. It's up to the individual committee whether or not they want to have their meetings open and how they want to facilitate that. And as the individual committees provide the information, I can place them on the calendar until we get to a point that it's set on a more regular basis. Right now, the meetings sometimes, I mean, they're usually scheduled at least a week in advance, but not always. So there's not always a large amount of time for turnaround for notification to when the meeting is being held.
Well, I'd kind of like to express concern about that because aren't these open to the public?
Only if the committee chooses for them. They are not, they do not fall underneath, underneath the open meeting regulation.
So how do I know that I could attend? I mean, is there a protocol? This seems a little helter-skelter, I have to admit. It's a little frustrating. So would it be better if I wrote to the chair or the council members on every committee? Is that what I should do to find out when they're meeting and if it's open to the public? There's got to be a better way.
My suggestion would be that the board, the committees would need to make a determination on how they would like to facilitate, facilitate public participation and have that as a standard, whether it be every meeting, every other meeting, or how they wish to, to do that. And then once that decision has been made, we can publicize that based on the decision that the individual committee makes.
So just for clarification, you know, even just listening as opposed to actually making a comment, is that considered participation?
I don't believe that would be participation, but it still is determined by the individual committees whether or not they want the committee meeting at that level to be open to the public to attend.
Okay, so do you have any idea when the new webpage might be up and running? So maybe it'd be a little easier to sort this out if that, will that help?
I, I don't think it will be, it would, honestly, I don't think it would make any difference whether I was putting it on the calendar of the current webpage or if I was putting it on the calendar of the new webpage. Again, ultimately, the decision on allowing public attendance and/or participation has to be made at the individual committee level. And once they make that determination and provide that in a, in a fashion that I can put that on the calendar with enough time for public to be notified, I will do so.
Okay, thank you for that. And let me just ask the one point of clarification. So when I do get a notification from WordPress about a committee meeting, can I assume that means I've been invited?
If I'm publishing the committee meeting, it does mean that the committee has agreed to have it public.
Okay, that's a start. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you Paige. Dave, did you have something to say?
It sounds like this is a good retreat topic.
I suspect so. Okay. All right, thank you everyone. Now I am officially adjourning the meeting. Have a good evening. We'll see you around.